On to the agenda items. Chair's remarks, nothing to report, actually, I'm sorry, call to order the February 11th meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. We have President Member Hawkins and Member Myers and myself, Chair Francisco. So we'll get started on the agenda items. Chair's remarks. I got nothing.
Okay.
Pretty quiet. So approval of minutes, I'll share these out. You guys have the minutes?
Yep.
Yes, I think so.
Have reviewed, yeah.
From the last meeting? Okay.
Yes. Okay, well, I think we're good. Thank you.
So these are the January 28th meeting minutes from our last minute with the applicant who's on the agenda tonight. Attending were Francisco Eldon, Shehabatine Hawkins, Myers, and Charlotte Mountain. No chair's remarks, approval of the minutes. We reproved the 114 minutes. There was no correspondence, no old business. We had Wells Fargo in. So Alexandra GMR Engineering described the project, know that per the previous meeting, the goose neck light fixture through the bank been deleted from the project. The drawing now notes that the base of the new light pole painted yellow during the discussion was noted that the parking area in North of Bank requires a two-foot candle minimum of illumination per New York State. Parking area in North of Bank may not meet the New York State requirements for legal parking area. I'm just going to add, under the statute, if this is the case, no lighting would be required. You guys have seen all the correspondence I've sent back and forth. Oh, hello there. We have that as well. Basically just saying that, you know, even if it doesn't really meet legal requirements, so it just seems quite clear that it doesn't, that we probably still, I certainly had spoken for myself, not the full board, but we'd like to see lighting over there anyway because the last thing you'd want is really is a well-lit front and then a dark corner on the side where somebody could lie and wait, you know, so, but obviously wouldn't need it to be as bright, which as Alex will say when he comes on, he's already done that. The ownership of the property in North of Bank will be affected to be considered as the location of the property line can be accurately determined with the original site plan file. That is correct. Michael gets this stuff down. He's, Michael, you want to join the board? Parking on the north side of the bank is problematic as access from the east is blocked by a tractor. That is oddly true. GMR to review requirements for three fixtures on the north side of the building with night towards deleting the westernmost fixture. The history of the tractor was discussed. It's true. Planning Board requested that the minimum foot candles levels be designed, which is what we asked, five or in a 10-foot radius around the entrance to the ATM. An option to reduce the lighting hotspots along the side will be only to only upgrade alternating fixtures. Yeah, there we go. New York State criteria for legal parking contiguous sidewalk identification of parking areas does benefit for the bank, whether parking is owned or controlled by the bank. That is correct. Planning Board discussion of the application can just discussion parking area in North of the Bank, access ownership and vehicle traffic paths. Any action by the planning board may not increase a pre-existing nonconformity. Yep. Matt, to meet with Charlotte Mountain to further discuss parking area related issues and how the board and village might resolve outstanding issues. Yeah, because it, you know, it certainly calls into question what that tractor park there was. Let's get through this and then we'll see. All right, so actually, there's just a minor change. Do we have a motion to append the, to approve the meetings as the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Excellent. Who will second?
Second.
Two seconds, and everybody says aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Very good. The minutes are approved. Let me save names. Okay, and so, so I did meet with Charlotte, because the question was really, as you recall, is really where is this property line? Let me just pop up the plans really quick. And so, you know, and unfortunately, I don't have a digital version of the, of the existing filed site plan, but you'll have to take my word for it, that it, it's done in like three sections. It's a composite, you know, it's a composite plan. So it has the site, what I think is the entire site plan. It's just not very clear that it's the entire site plan, and it doesn't show the boundary, which is not great. And then it shows like a trust detail and a fence detail. So it's not like you would like to see, you know, on a site plan, just the site plan, right? At least on one page, you know, something like, like this, right? So you actually know what the, what the boundaries of the site are. The shading is nice because it's the scope of the project. So as you guys all know, what, from the emails, is that it wasn't all that clear from the filed site plan for this property, for the subject property, but it is quite clear when you look at, I actually guess I should share that one instead. One second. At the neighboring property, which is 37 to 39 Chestnut, which is Louis, the main course is the first building.
Mm-hmm.
And this is that plan, right? Again, a composite plan, but you at least have a section that is very clear. It's the full site, right? Which is, which is over here. So these are the north, the spaces along the edge, the northern boundary of Foodtown. This is Foodtown. That is actually Wells Fargo right here, but the Foodtown Plaza. It's quite clear that these are part of this site plan. There's an easement here, which explains how they even get into their site, because it's very weird over there. They actually are coming in through Elmesco, which is, if everybody remembers the history of this, that's where this concern started, is when Elmesco was selling to the Dunkin' Donuts franchisee. This tenant was concerned about this just becoming kind of a throughway for the drive-thru. We've gotten really lucky there. I mean, there's a million, the planning board at the time really had a bunch of site notes on there, because it's not, it's unusual to see a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through that doesn't back up, right? And ours doesn't. But anyway, that was the concern at the time when it was under discussion. So it's very clear, you can see that these are, these are marked contiguous, you know, or sequentially rather, around, just around this whole site. So these are clearly part of this site. We, I had asked the, as you guys saw in the emails, I asked the owner, the owners, which is Alex Sarukas, Constantine's son, and he said he would come up with a, with a survey. Haven't seen one yet. So we'll have to, we'll have to figure out how to address that. I've got some ideas, so we can kind of move this forward. But as I was explaining to Alex and to both Alex, Alex Sarukas, as well as Alexandra, the representative for the applicant, the site plan, the, you know, the planning board files site plans. We can't file things that are bad, right? It doesn't, we're not really helping anybody, because no different than me going back to this and kind of, you know, the first record wasn't great, but luckily, when I go to the neighboring property, you know, I can pull up one and get a pretty clear sense. You know, I walked, I went to the site on Saturday before I met with Charlotte, and the monument sign is right here. You know, and so it is, you know, it is not at all likely that the property line is over here if the sign to the property for this property is mounted here, right? So it seems quite clear that this is the case. And then, I don't know if you guys noticed in Alex Sarukas's email, but on his phone, he actually drew in a property line. Did you guys notice that? Because it didn't, it doesn't show up on a PC. I don't know, it's the weirdest thing. Let me pull it up really quick.
Is it that, that boundary on the right?
What's that? He drew, he drew in the north boundary of his property. Let me just see if I can find it really quick.
Okay, okay. Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Let me just, I might have to just send it from my phone. Give me one quick second.
I have it up if you just want me to share it, and then you can.
Oh, you have, Alex, you have the one that he?
Yep, that he kind of drew on there.
Yeah, I couldn't actually, I couldn't actually see it on my PC. It was only coming up on my phone.
Yeah, I can just, you want me to share my screen, and then you can just talk to it, and then I can switch back to you.
Yep, that's it. So this is what Alex Sarukas, the owner, has, he kind of sketched that in. This was last Thursday, and he said we'd have a, I'd have a site plan, a survey rather, because this is making me a little nervous, kind of having, you know, documents go back and forth that don't have the correct property line. But more importantly, or just as importantly, we're also putting a light pole on the edge of a property line that we haven't yet determined exactly where it is. So, and of course, Alex Sarukas draws it in right through the middle of the property line, which obviously puts it, you know, partially on the property line. Obviously, this is not to scale. He just drew it in by hand on a phone, clearly, it looks like. You know, because he did this at night. He replied, he replied back immediately. So we'll have to figure out what we're going to do about that. I think that we're going to have to see a plan that obviously shows the correct lot line. And I think probably the best way to deal with it is maybe just to put an owner's endorsement block on the plans that Alex has to sign, the owner has to sign, and attest to the lot line and approve all the work that's being done. Because otherwise, I think we're, you know, we, the last thing we want to do is, I don't, I don't really, and the board can, you know, I'm certainly wanting to hear the board's comments, but I don't see the need to force someone to go get a survey, right? But I'd also don't, obviously, two things. We can't file, we don't want to file a plan that is at all incorrect. And secondly, we don't want to create an issue between the two properties if the boundary isn't fully understood by approving work right on the edge of the boundary, right? Or over the edge of the boundary. We don't really know, because it is, at best, it's barely within the boundary, and at worst, it's on the boundary. And if the neighboring property has anything to say about that, then it's just going to kind of, it's going to be kind of kicking the can down the road. So.
Matt, I have a question about that. Is it, is it required that the site plan that we approve for, you know, for any application here, that, that it is, that in, that the site plan include a clear delineation of the property lines?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that we don't want to file, we don't want to file it without that. Because, because we all have different, we all have different needs as we go back to the record. So the stuff that we pull out, we got to make sure that we're helping the next guy, you know?
Yeah. So, yeah, I, that's clear to me, and okay, I want to understand that. So I'm just following that through to the, the natural conclusion. I'm wondering if, if it's possible to then say, no, you, you don't need to get a, provide us with a survey.
Well, I think if, if Alex, if, if the property owner is 100% confident and willing to, to attest to the, to the lot line, being right at the front of all those spaces and right at the edge of his building, right? And as long as the pole is set in from that, then I think that's fine. So what I was suggesting, Alex, if you want to stop sharing, I'll share a different drawing, You know, something just along the lines of this, like, on a landlord certifies that the information contained in his drawings is accurate and approves the tenant's scope of work represented under signature, print name, and then notarize it, right? So then.
And that's, we can rely on that, right?
That's what we would be relying on. That's the suggestion. Or the other thing is to get a survey, but then the survey has to be coordinated to the drawings, which is, you know, it's, it's time and money, and, and so Alex, Alex, I assume you haven't received a survey from your landlord?
No, that, what you have shown us is basically where we would move the property line at that point in our plans, to the edge of that north building, unless we get told something different.
Would it, would it be prudent to, or is this even an option to require not just one property owner, but the adjacent property owner to sort of, I mean, I guess the adjacent property owner is not part of this discussion, but I just worry, like, is there going to be an issue if the, if there's any sort of dispute later on, if we've, if we've accepted the statement of the property owner of this application and not considered, like, do we, yeah, does that question make sense? I'm just curious.
It does. No, no, and that's right, really, and that's what I was saying earlier. You know, you're absolutely right. That's it, that's where the issue lies, right? Is that, you know, if we don't establish the boundary correctly, I think we're fine by saying that the landlord, the owner of the property, not the landlord, let's just be clear, it's the owner of the property, needs to know their boundary, needs to do work on their property. And if they show something on a drawing that shows the boundary here, right? And that the work, their work is happening inside. Now, we're this, I don't, this, Alex, so I assume the base of this pole is somewhere midway between these two fixtures?
Yeah, so basically, it's right, so if you zoom in on it, the pole would almost be, be where the two lines intersect, because.
Right here.
Yes, yeah, so.
Which right now would appear to be off, would be on the neighbor's property.
Right, and so we could move it, the whole point is right there is, you know, so the parking isn't as obstructed as much, because right there, it's a three, like a, I think it's 18 inches in width is what it'd be considered, so it really wouldn't touch the parking spot. So we could maybe even move it in between two parking spots right there, or just move it up. So, but you just have to have a smaller vehicle to park there if we just moved it up instead of in between a parking spot.
I think, yeah, yeah, because if you come, if you come over here, I'm sure you're probably fine, right?
Right, yeah, yep.
And I just thought of something too, well, maybe this is a weird inference, but if the, that line of the parking, that horizontal line of the parking is, is the same line of the building, so maybe it is, so is it, right? It's the same.
It seems to be, like, when you, when you look at this, and then the monument sign, so there's this island, this brick island here, right, which has the tree in it, the monument sign for this property is right here. So it seems pretty clear that the line has got to be south of that, right? South of that monument sign.
It's interesting, so is the buildout of Foodtown all the way up to the property line, which is allowed, I guess, because of.
Maybe it was at the time.
Yeah, you can do that in industrial areas. It's not, I don't love it myself, but, you know, I imagine partly it was probably a service to the, you know, to the village as well, right? To have these, you know, have these services and have a place for them on the main.
Right.
You know, that really wouldn't adapt well to like Main Street.
Yeah.
Don't know, but yeah, no, and in fact, there was even, when the post office was needing a home, or whatever we want to call that, they wanted to then expand that side all the way to the road, which, that's, that's really dangerous, because that's a, you know, there's a lot of vehicular traffic, you know? So that's, yeah.
So I'm just curious, I mean, I guess that's a, that's an indication that if Foodtown is built up to that line, or that building, sorry, that, that contains Foodtown and all the other storefronts, since it's built up to that line, I think we can more confidently accept that that is the property line, maybe?
Yeah, and again, let's take a step back, is, this is not really our work to do, right? I do this only because I just want to get to the answer. It's not my job, it's not any of our jobs to really go find the property line for an applicant, right? Nor do we want to have our hand in it, right? But to avoid filing something that I know to be wrong, well, then, you know, I'm, you know, it's, it's, it behooves us to kind of get it right.
Yeah.
But the property line, I can assure you, is not coming from me. It's not coming from any of you, right? So Alex needs to reach out to his landlord and, and have him attest to the property line. Alex, Alex can decide where to draw that line, and then the landlord, I'm sorry, owner, can then attest that that's the line, and the work that he's proposing on his property, A, is on his property, and B, he approves the work that his tenant is going to do. I think that's the best way to handle this, just with the, you know, with a block on the drawing that basically, you know, that, like I said, and this is just, this is not from a lawyer, this is just from me, but I think it's probably fine, is basically.
Is there a role for Louis, for the, the adjacent neighbor, given the fact that this is right on his property line? His property line also?
I mean, it's, it's not a change of use. It's, it's not required to have a public hearing. Yeah, I mean, look, we don't.
Right, no, I know that, but the, the plan is to, to request that, that installation of the post?
But again, but again, I don't know that the planning board wants to start, you know, either supporting or not supporting represented property lines, right? And then drawing in the neighboring applications. I mean, you, you would then.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it, I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying, that that would, that if we, I guess I'm asking if, if it isn't appropriate in order to make sure the planning board is agnostic, to make sure that because of the, because the property, the property is built out to the property line, or that's what we're assuming, without, you know, without having the benefit of that survey? If we're going to be asking someone to make manual changes to this, it seems like it, then the, the neighboring property would have to agree, yes, I concur, that is the property line.
That, that was my question as well, yeah.
Well, yeah, but from a process perspective, you're talking about, you know, drawing somebody else into an application. Who's doing that, right? It's not the planning.
Okay. Right, okay, well.
It's no different than, it's no different than you undertake, you know, a fence at your, you know, at your yard. Yeah, it is in your best interest, your best interest, to talk to your neighbor and make sure you agree on the lot line before you start on your fence. In the absence of that.
Right, but we're doing this in the absence of a survey, right? Because the survey, I'm, I presume that a survey is a, the objective standard, and that's why you don't, like, one doesn't need to invite one's neighbor into the discussion, but because it's not, because this isn't an impartial line, manual line drawing, you know, because we don't have that third party of the survey company, we're relying on the applicant.
Then I think what we should, if the board, if the majority of the board feels that way, then we should just get the survey. This, I don't, I don't think the solution is to start engaging neighbors to ask whether or not two neighbors agree on their boundary. I don't, you know.
I think that's fair, yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I see that, I see that point, but I worry about, like, if we accept, we accept that only one person, one property owner's statement, does that make us, well, I don't know, are we doing our due diligence is my only question?
Well, yeah, I personally, I feel like we've done more than we need to. I mean, I've spent a lot of time on this, kind of going through the record, to confirm that at least what we're being shown isn't correct, and to go, and to reach out to the owner and say, where's your lot line? I said, you know, and I was explaining to Alex on the call to just say that, you know, we understand that you're undertaking this scope of work, but the, first and foremost, what a planning board does is, is file site plans, right? So the site plan needs to be correct. We don't want somebody else to pick up a record that looks like the property line moved 30 feet to the north, right, on a, on a filing in 2021, and nobody can understand why, right? You know, but I think when we were discussing this, we were kind of in the, in the dark as well, talking about the tractor. And I said, well, I think the tractor is the answer to where the, you know, to where the property line is, based on a neighbor, that I don't think his, I suspect his dispute is not so much with, with, with Foodtown. I think it had to, if I recall, it came up when, when Elmesco was selling to the Dunkin' Donuts franchisee.
I think you're right, Matt.
Nobody, nobody really, nobody really uses that. So I think that's fine. I mean, how, it sounds like the, at least the majority, if not the full, and I certainly support that, if the board says, listen, we're not going to proceed without a survey. First of all, there has to be a survey. This is not that old. This, you know, it was just rebuilt in 2008, I think it was? Or no, no, it was after that.
I, yeah, I, I think it's really weird that a owner does not have a, a proper document to line out the, the border.
He's not saying he doesn't, he just hasn't provided it.
Okay, well, so does he have it?
Well, you're, you're on the emails, you know, you've been on the emails where he said he has it and he's going to provide it. He hasn't provided it yet.
But he hasn't done anything, so.
Yeah, so that's fine. I mean, look, Alex, you know, when we tell Alex on the call, which he's probably hearing now, that, that we need a survey, he'll have to apply pressure to his landlord to make sure he gets a survey. I mean, that's personally reasonable. Look, I get it. I mean, I, I would hate to have somebody have to go to the expense of a survey to do this, but it is a commercial property, and it is, it is, you know, it is, it's a critical issue. And like I said, we really want to help the record, not hurt the record, right? So when we file this, and then it goes on microfiche, and then somebody looks at it 10 years from now, saying, you know, what the hell is that tractor doing that, right? This rusty tractor that's probably still there. Although I have, just so they're clear, I've talked to Charlotte, I said, this, these people, the next door neighbor is not complying with their site plan. You know, you got to park, you know, all those parking spaces are no longer striped. The ones in front of the Foodtown ones that are, that are both nose-in, they're all gone on the, on the property side, but they're part of the numbered site plan, right, for the parking. And so it has less parking than was approved. The parking in the rear of the property off of Marion is almost all covered by tractors.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, I said, I'm not aware that we have a parking problem there. I don't ever see anybody there, right? I mean, it's just a couple cars at a time. I don't love the fact that, that the tractor is blocking what, what is, in my opinion, a fire lane, you know? So I think that, you know, and, and hey, we know what happened to Foodtown, it burned, right? So I mean, you know, so it's important that I think that they comply with their site plan, but that's a separate issue. All right, so the board, we're, we're in agreement that we're going to ask for a survey just to show the northern lot line. And then we don't need to have them go to the expense of incorporating the survey. We can actually just look at the survey, can, I'm pretty sure we'll be able to eyeball it and see that it, I know that people have been here for a long time. In fact, they even told me this was wrong. They're like, no, 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 the lot line is right up against the building. I said, well, that's not the plan that we got. And that does seem to be the case. I'm pretty sure the survey will show that when they rebuild, because this was an expansion, right? Didn't they, they extended the building after the, after the Grand Union fire?
I don't know.
Anybody, was anybody here? We had just moved here after the fire.
Same.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same.
Okay. None of us are responsible for the fire. That's, that's, that's.
We didn't remote control.
All right, so, all right, so that's fine. Sorry about that, Alex, but it shouldn't be that big of a deal, and I'll, I'll help you as well. I'll shoot another email to Alex Sarukas to just say, you know, you're, you're holding up your tenant.
Okay. And just to be clear, even if we move, I mean, the survey is going to come probably back on that parking space, and we're going to have to move that pole south into.
The pole will absolutely need to be moved, because at best, you've got a lot line going through it, and you need to be completely clear of the lot line. I don't care if you go right up against it. Look, for God's sakes, if you can drop a building on the lot line, I don't see any reason why you can't have a three-by-three base for a parking pole on a commercial project near the lot line. Let's just keep it off the lot, you know, set in a few inches. But again, I, if, I think if you do put it on the dividing line, there's plenty of room, I think, to park a car in those spaces.
Okay, that was my question, is just making sure if we went in between parking spots and moved it up, you know, just so it wouldn't be over the lot line, would that be an issue?
So it's a foot and a half on the front of the car? I, I don't think so, because I mean, obviously, it doesn't obstruct the doors of the vehicle, right? You've got to keep your car, you've got to keep your car in a foot and a half anyway, you know?
Because that's, I'll be, with other sites, we, we usually, I don't know why we didn't do this, but we usually do put them in the middle of parking spots, because it's just easier for both, like, both sides of the pole, like, cars to pull in next to the pole.
Yeah, exactly, because you can, you can nose your front end, you know, your driver's side front end up against it, or passenger side on the other side, and it doesn't, it doesn't obstruct you opening your door. You need that much free room to open your door anyway, right? You're not supposed to be parking the left edge of your vehicle on the left edge of the parking spot and then swinging your door into the next space.
That's definitely, I'm, I would have to go back, I don't know why we did that in the middle. That doesn't make sense to me in the first place, so I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so I think once, you know, once we see that from Alex, I'll ping him again, just to let him know. Okay, so, and then we'll, we'll move on. I think it would be best, well, look, if we get the lot line drawn in here, I don't have any issue with the striping, but. But I I just kind of feel like we shouldn't show the striping. So it's clear that it's not part of the of of your site plan.
Not part of the, yeah, I agree with you, Matt.
We can definitely remove it, that's not a problem.
And this up here, so I just made a couple changes to this. I I don't know how strongly people feel about this, this boundary kind of, it it makes, let me put this white out away. It just kind of feels like I'm looking at the at the street and the end of the building. But you do have a page, in fairness, you do have the first page, which shows clearly what's in scope and what's out of scope. But you know what, actually, can you, do you have the entire building?
So, again, we can draw it in based off of like Google Maps. But just because of the radius of what we need a light to, we kind of stopped right at, I don't know, I think it's like a shopping center right there, or I don't know.
Then do what I, then do what I have proposed here, let's just wipe this out, right? So, so there's nothing here.
Yeah, or I can, and then if you want to do. And just kind of, I just won't have any like fixtures or know what's going on over there. We can just kind of continue it just so you can see that it doesn't end right there.
Whatever's easiest, or even if you want to do a tear edge here, you know, to just say that, I I just wanted, it kind of. A couple of times I've looked at this and thought I was looking at the entire plaza, right?
I'll be honest with you, I was looking at that today and I realized that it cuts off after our, after the call yesterday. It cuts off right there at whatever the build, whatever business is right next to it after the like nail salon or whatever exactly it is.
The dry cleaner?
I think it's the dry cleaner is the one right next to Foodtown, right?
Oh, no, that's the the hair hair salon is right next to, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so whatever, whatever's easiest, but just because it kind of with with that border there, it just kind of feels like you're at the street. I also, these are drawn in too, I drew those in.
Yeah.
You just kind of have this feeling that you're at the street. So just whatever you think can kind of clear, clean that up. This, I'll just shoot you in an email, just a, just a signature block for the owner.
Right, and even, we're going to still need a survey even though we're filling this out. This is just going to be double confirmation from.
Just so it's, just so there's a stamp on, just so there's a sign on the site plan. And then, and I'm sure he's probably pretty quick for signatures, right? I mean.
Yeah, he's been pretty responsive ever since we've gone into the process with you guys, so.
All right, so we'll, and we'll get the property in the right, property line in the right place, remove the striping for the parking, even though you'll probably show a little bit of this. Because you're gonna, your photometrics are gonna, obviously gonna need to kind of show where your radius is.
Yeah.
And then, and then I had a question too. So I I I feel like this is designed, this whole plan is designed to set to 74B for B. Which is an exterior ATM. My read of the code, and and I may be wrong, is that when the, when the ATM is interior. There's only a requirement of a 30-foot radius to maintain two-foot candles and a 60-foot radius to maintain one-foot candle.
So I believe it's because that interior ATM is accessible 24 hours. So the reason why it is not exterior, but it is a 24-hour ATM, it's inside a vestable. But it's not accessible from, like, the main building is blocked, so you can't go inside the main building.
Yeah, let me just show this really quick to the board, just I'm not sure if people looked at it. Because I was looking at the code again and I'm like, the statute rather, and.
And I can definitely get a response back on that from our lawyers or our legal team.
Yeah, because what we're asking you to do is to design to the minimum and, you know, and I know obviously we'll get into the HDRB. In a moment, let me, pages from the statute, here we go.
Page 40?
So, so, this is.
Page 40?
What's that?
I thought it was page 40 or something.
I I I took out just the New York section.
Okay.
So it's section 75B.
Yeah.
Item four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So with respect to an open operated teller machine, open to the outdoor air, right? It's the five, the five-foot, you know, so. And then the rest of these.
Is this open? Is that, is that, is that what this is?
No, 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 that's when it's mounted on the side of the building. When you walk up, it's open to the air. So.
Understood.
We, in the first meeting, you know, I said, are you designing to be or see? And, well, you know what, I'm, I'm not sure I said it that way, I should have said it that way. I I met whether or not you're signing to be or see the statute. What I said is you have an interior or open-air ATM. But it sounds like what Alex is saying, and that that may well be, is that you can have an interior one. But yet there are some other changes. But on an interior one, the the ATM is located within the interior of a building. And then the only, there are only two, two radiuses.
Yeah.
So it's a 30-foot radius and then a two-foot candles and then a 60-foot radius at one-foot candle. Which is a much lower light level, right? So, but, so it sounds like, and then it says. If an automated teller machine is not in accordance with the standards set in either paragraph. A minimum illuminance of two-foot candles measured on a horizontal plane. At least five feet above the ground, 60 feet in all unobstructed directions. So you're still at, well, no, that's an additional foot candle, right? Because that's an additional foot candle, because the one up here is one-foot candle at 60 feet, five feet above. So this is twice the lighting, if it doesn't match.
Measured differently as well.
Oh, a horizontal plane versus a vertical plane, right?
And, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so just go, we just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're approving this. And you saw the, you heard the pushback last night from the HDRB.
I absolutely did, happy to hear it.
Yeah, you and me both, I tried. So, and and we can, no promises, but we can deal with that.
Okay.
And we will.
I mean, I'll try, what they said about lowering the lights below the sign, I can try that, because that is only.
Look, I think, what what I, it wasn't the ask, it was the way the ask was phrased. Because the 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 HDRB, their purview is in the arrangement of fixtures, not a lighting plan. So to talk about you adding light poles and removing fixtures, that is, that is, that's planning, right? Frankly, to be very frank. And you're, you are subject to a code that requires to deliver a very defined, you know, number of foot candles at certain radius. So, but I think it's. If I'm the HDRB, what I say then is I would like you to consider a different arrangement of these fixtures, right? And I don't disagree with the one point that they made, which is that, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to be lighting the signs on top of the sign lighting, right? And creating, you know, and because each of them have those linear lights, they ain't great. But I mean, that that's what it is and, you know, and luckily, we didn't get into where their purview is most clear. Which is the architectural features of the fixture itself, right?
Right, yeah.
That's usually where you kind of go down.
So we kind of, it's, I mean, I I understand getting the fixtures below and I can definitely try that. That's not unreasonable ask at all. My thing comes from, you know, when they say try to move it from this sign 10 feet over to the other sign. It's like, well, I can try that, but one, even lowering those fixtures is going to make the photometrics look brighter and create a hotspot just by lowering them a couple feet. So then I do that, we come back here and you're, maybe you guys say it's too bright over here now. It's.
And as, and as you well know, I said, you're putting the applicant in a catch 22, right?
Yep, yep.
To get bounced back and forth to boards and never meet a statute. So Al, the chair of the HDRB is an architect, as you, as you heard. And and those lighting plants, as you, as you heard, and that's, that's all well and good. But how many fixtures do you need to, you know, kind of rotate through and kind of, to kind of figure out exactly how to get this? And I get what they're trying to do. But again, i- i- it's the ask, I think, is that, you know, could you, I think a simpler ask would have just been, or an appropriate ask would have been. Could you consider a different arrangement of these fixtures, right? And and could you see if that will work? Right, you know, the the, I was getting a little concerned when they were talking about adding a light pole, right?
And where they suggested, I was like, that's not even reasonable in the first place, so I don't.
Yeah, so we'll see what we can do. I'll speak to the code enforcement officer with respect to, you know. Who's got purview over what? Because I don't, I want, I do want to make sure that you're not just kind of trapped in this and getting bounced back and forth. I think there, I think it really could have just been a simple ask of, can you, can you consider fixtures and or fixture arrangement? That wouldn't interfere with those lights, you know, the signage, the lighting of the signage. You know, look, I mean, talking about what is appropriate to the district in that building, in that area.
That's a little, that's a little beyond, that tests, that tests reason.
And they were also saying, well, what if the tenant changes? And I said, well, that's fine. I said, you know, what we could certainly do is say that this is an approved scope of work for this tenancy. And if the tenant leaves, it gets removed, right? We can certainly say that, you know, that's fine. But they said, well, what if they stay forever? And I'm like, well, you're making my argument, because if they stay forever, it's required by code. And it's a state statute and it must be there. I don't think there's any, you know, any future where we're not dealing with ATMs. There's probably going to be less bodies and more ATMs. You know, so it, you know, I said, I don't, if that's the issue, because they were concerned and I, and I get it. We, you know, we had the same concern, is that, you know, you're kind of creating this, you know, this hotspot in this very dark site. But if that's the way it has to be, I don't know. That the solution is to then force the rest of the light, the the lot to be even, to be as evenly lit. I don't think that's an improvement. And I'm not particularly comfortable, you know, trying to force an applicant to go beyond the scope of work in their application. Right, it's not really something that you're supposed to be doing. But to the, but to the point too, do we really want it lit like a Butterfield? I mean, I don't know that that really, you know, to say, if you even this out, well, great, well, then it's a foot candle, you know, through the entire parking lot, right? You know, that's, that's very different over there, right? And I don't, you know, I don't know about you guys, and and again, our personal interests don't matter, right? But the comp plan clearly says, let's try to maintain the nighttime village character. Right, and our, all our light code says, which we do need to talk about, and I think we're okay. Is that you can't, you can't have light trespass within 25 feet of a residential boundary. So Alex, when you go to redo your. Make sure, I think the only, let me just do, but just do the Google Earth, give me one quick second. I don't think you'll have any issue, but. It's crawling.
Google Earth is is a useful one, isn't it?
That's great, yeah. Do I have? Oh, it's coming up anyway.
Wow.
Yeah, that was, that was our last meeting, right?
Yeah, that was the.
I wonder what he's up to.
That's the depot guy there.
It's amazing how big that property is.
What happened to that guy?
Well, he says, it's, it's residential property. I told him, I said, you know, I told him to reach out to the ZBA, but I don't know that, I'm not sure what they could even do for him. So I don't think there's going to be any issue here. So a boundary for residential would be the middle of the street, right? Because right here is, is, this is B1. This is R1 over here, but that, you're nowhere near, well, I don't know, so.
I don't think with the, that's pretty far out for that pole to be crossing over into that area or even into that right of way, really. Because I think there's already a city pole on where those trees are right before the right of way. That might be pointing into the street and that would be where most of the light's coming from.
I I agree, I don't think you'll have any issue here. And back here, you're using such low lighting, you've got to be, you can't have light trespass past the middle of the road back here.
Right.
Which I don't think you will. So just, just be attentive of that. This is a, is not obviously residential, so you can spill, you can spill light onto this property. Which I don't think they would have any issue with, it just increases their security. And you're not using very high light levels anyway.
No, yeah, now in that area, we're using the lowest package possible, so we can look at it later. And if anybody thinks we need to remove a fixture, we can, because we don't need a light for it.
Oh, on this over here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, on that side, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, I I mean, I don't know how the board feels, I had put that in my email that I for one support, you know, leaving these fixtures here. Just because I think that, you know, creating all this light here is is all well and good unless somebody lies in wait in the dark over here, right?
Right.
You know, and then you're walking out and you're walking to your car, you're walking this way.
I'm persuaded, I agree.
And I think there are only one or two foot candles, something like that, Alex, the lowest foot candle on that fixture.
Yeah, so right underneath it, it's like a three, but it go, like, if you go to that street, it's zero, basically. I can, we can show it, I can show it later, but before we had three wall lights going up there, like a four total on that side. And now it's only two plus the one for compliance area.
Okay, yeah, if you want to, if you want to pop your plans up, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna shift a little bit because of. So obviously, you'll go back to your legal for the code interpretation to say, you know, why does it look like you're on B when your ATM is a C? And and I suspect you might have some.
Can you tell me what, what the, I guess, the the number of that code was?
Yeah, so. So as far as I, as far as I can tell.
I saw it was on page four of the statute, so and it was B or C, but it was sort of like seven.
75B4C is what I, is what I believe you fall under. 75B, 75 dash B, number four, C.
Okay.
That's an automated teller machine when it's located in the interior of a building.
Yeah.
And that may be exactly what you're saying is that there was some further interpretation of this, that interior meant, you know, a, that was open during business hours.
Yeah, I can definitely.
Although that doesn't make any, well, that, wait, that doesn't make any sense, though, because this whole lighting code is only after hours, well, of course.
The lobby is open 24 hours. So the business can be closed and you can still access the lobby at any time during night because they keep the vestable open.
With a card reader, yeah. Yeah, so get, yeah, so, but like I said, your, your plans appear to be designing to 4B. And that's when.
Yeah, we can definitely get, I will, I'm not going to say I'm a legal expert here, because I'm not. So I will definitely get a statement from our team.
Okay.
So they can all, and then you can.
And if it's not, yeah, and it, yeah. And then if it's not, if it, if it turns out that it is actually for C. Then just re- redo the plan that way to just show and and go down towards the minimum, allowing for degradation and, you know, and and calculation errors.
We would change it to the minimum.
Yeah.
Because I mean, we, we've already gone back and realized the parking because we didn't know exactly what the property line was. So we'll go back, see what they say. And if they agree with you, we'll lower the light levels. If not, we'll provide the statement and see what we agree on.
Okay, very good, all right, go ahead.
So really, the only difference between this time and last time is we worked on this, underneath this canopy area. Because we have these two wall lights left and right of the lobby entry, we didn't need as many of these canopy lights.
And what happened last night? I was having a really hard time following. Why the HDRB was trying to keep those wall lights.
They were trying to keep the wall lights or remove them and add them up top or keep. I was just, it was really weird, because they, they, they're trying to say, since it's 45 degrees, it should be able to meet the compliance area easier, so we can keep them. But at the same time, they're asking to move them or remove them and add the canopy fixtures back into.
Yeah, and that, and that's my, that, that is my, that is when you move into even beyond planning, but into engineering.
Right.
That's light design, right? That's neither of our boards do that, frankly. So when we ask you, we're careful how we ask you, right? In fact, we got glowing reviews from our code enforcement officer who said, your board's good.
I feel like I need to come visit you guys after all these calls.
You know, because it's like, what we said was, see if you can eliminate the hotspots, right? We're not telling you how to do that.
Good enough direction for us.
Yeah, and just to tone them down. I I think I did go a little bit further and said, well, maybe you could just blank out, you know, or just D lamp, you know, every other one and, but we're not going to tell you. I'm not going to tell you that a fixture will perform certain photometrics, you know, because it's mounted on a wall and therefore you can remove an outstair fixture. Or maybe add a parking pole, that's not, that's not what we do. Because really, we're don't, it's not our lighting plan, right? It, it, it's yours. You're asking us to review it. So, but did, I don't remember, did those stay or did those go? Those, those, those 45 degree angled ones on the wall? I mean, they're hideous. I don't.
There, we are replacing them with a full cutoff fixture. So right as of now, we are replacing them. And even with the comments from the historic board, I'm going to keep it like this and try to work on these two fixtures that are on the facade.
Okay.
Because honestly, it's the best option to have these if you want consistent light levels.
Yeah, and they're, look, they're asked, the, 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 the basic, the basic tenant of their ask, which was to, which should frankly, should have been, could you consider an arrangement, a different arrangement of fixtures, right? And ones that would not compete with the overhead lighting from the signage, right? You know, but really how fixtures are going to perform and how you achieve that, you know, that's, you know, that's obviously your work. But so I guess we'll have to wait to see how you come back.
Well, and honestly, I don't think, unless something changes here in between the law and everything, I think most of it's going to stay the same except for these two fixtures here. Because that's finally at the end, when, I don't know if, I think it was Sean was like, really, we're just asking to like, put the lights below the sign is really what the question is, or have them the same heights. So I understand what they're saying, but basically for what we're doing here, really, the only difference is we're able to remove a lot of these can, the can fixtures and keeping some, when I say remove, remove and patch, so it's not just going to be a hole in the ceiling because of these two wall fixtures that are underneath the canopy. So I can show you the light levels now. And I can probably bring up what they were, I can bring them up, what they were before as well, just so you can kind of see.
Yeah, I remember under that canopy, you had spots that were at 25, and now your highest is 10.
So let, let me actually bring up, just so you guys can see what it was the last time. Try to put them side by side. So if you're looking at the one over here, this is from the last meeting, and this is from this meeting.
I thought there were hotspots of like 25. Wow, no, it's not, no.
Well, if you, so you, there are, if you kind of look like right here, just based off of, this is, so this one right here is at grade on the ground.
Oh, okay.
This is, yeah, so this is at five feet. So there are, like, you see 20, 30 right here.
There, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it, it is gonna be, I can show you what they look like.
And that's really what changes the whole game for you. If you, if you end up in five, if you end up in, in ATM B, right? You know, the, the.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need, you don't need all that light. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, that's obviously, just so you don't waste your time, get that answer first.
Absolutely, yeah. Because I think the survey is going to be, obviously we need it, but I definitely agree that we will bring in our property line to at least here, move the pole, you know, whether it be this spot or this spot. But other than that, I think really, if y'all are happy with the design, and then I go back and see what I can do to appease the historic board, it's really just getting the legal answer, the survey, and updating our plans to reflect that.
Yep.
So unless, I guess, the really, the only question is, does anyone have any problems with the lighting over here? Because I think that's the last concern.
The two fixtures?
Correct.
I, I, my vote is to have them there. I mean, they're not part of this program, they're not required. But I don't, I don't really see how you have ATM security if that, if that's in the dark. The neighbor on the other side has no lighting on that side, right?
Um, let me see what our compliance area looks like. So if they had lighting over here, we would see it. Just because our compliance area extends to it, so we would have surveyed it and took a note. So I don't think they have anything on this side. Anything over here or down here, I wouldn't be able to say.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a safe situation, right? To have a dark alleyway, right? You know, you know. So I mean, I think.
I, I would agree on the, the lights along the building there. Does see SH2 that, that line there, I would agree to have lights.
And the way we, the distribution type we used, and it's the lowest lumin package, it, it drops off here at the last parking spot. So it, it's not like it's flooding into the street or anything. It, it's going to cut off pretty much right here.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the area that I was most concerned about was right here. You know, at the, right at the center of Marion Avenue, but you're already at zero here. At the most, you have is like less than half a foot candle. So by the time you're 25 feet out, that's not light trespass.
Yeah, and we can, I can try, I can, I think we can extend our photometrics out to that 25 feet, just so you can actually see the real number. But I don't think it would be anything because that, this is a point five just based off of, you know, light reflecting, and then right after that, it's going to be gone.
Yeah. Yeah, because I was going to say your line here is, this line is less, so it's, it's the reflected throw, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, that's fine. But to the, so there's the other board members, Stephanie and Lara, what do you, how do you feel about the lighting on the north side? There's already lighting there. We're basically taking lighting that's throwing out at a 45 degree.
Yeah.
But.
I'm comfortable with it, and I'm persuaded.
Okay, but the important part to understand is that this is now dawn to dusk or dusk to dawn. Right? The stuff, I don't, I don't know actually when these lights get turned off and on. I don't know, I don't even, I don't know. Just, you know, but.
I'm sorry, how, light up to a certain point, it turns on and turns off on its own?
Well, what we're talking about here, which I think is, which, which I think is important, is that these are all separately circuited and controlled by the, by Wells Fargo. They're not on the landlord circuits now. They're also tamper proof.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
They're also tamper proof. So all the way around from the, from the obstructed back door, right? To what would have been a dark alleyway is now all lit from, what is it, 30 minutes after dusk and then 30 minutes before sunrise or something like that?
Yeah, and usually, I think they either do a photocell or an override switch that kind of keeps them on.
Okay. Because if you, right now, they're on the landlord circuit. So the landlord may be shutting them off, you know, no landlord wants to pay more electric than they have to. Right? You know, so I don't imagine that they're on all night. The bank is obviously understands the value of that light and, and keeping the site secure. So this way, if we put them, if we put them all on this program, they're all on, you know, for this lighting program, which is, you know, essentially dusted on a little on either side.
So I just wanted to confirm, though, that, that these were, it was, it was noted that these would be a lower light, they would not have to be as bright as the, the ones that were in the program.
Correct. So what actually we did was, I think before we had three light fixtures, we removed one of them, and these two are the lowest light lumens possible for that fixture family. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
That was going to be my question, too.
Okay, good. Yeah, that was the ask in the email. I said, you know, since, you know, I said, speaking for myself alone, I think the light should be there, but since they're not part of the program, the lowest lumens available
Yeah.
for that fixture, because obviously I think you do want the fixtures to match. And man, anything's an improvement over those hideous, like, you know, those 45 degree, you know, I mean, they're just, I mean, it's really something that you're just not supposed to look at, right? It's in a, you know, in a truck yard, a truck yard or whatever. It's not, you know, I mean, it's a little sad to have it on and exposed.
It's not hard to improve on those, is it?
Yeah, that's why I was floored when they were trying to keep them last night.
I missed that. I did, I missed that.
Yeah, there, there are, there are two of them in the front, right? On either side of the bank, and they wanted to keep them because they said they would, they could, their, their, their theory or their engineering was that those would throw light out into the parking lot and would reduce the need for some of the other lights. You know, I would think you'd want to eliminate those immediately. I mean, just because they're just, they're, I mean, they're just very sad. I mean, they're, you know, it's like a fixture that literally, you're never supposed to be looking at that fixture. You know, from an aesthetic perspective, and certainly not on the front of a building or even on a side that's visible from the street, I don't think. I think they're just like, they are the most utilitarian, it doesn't matter what it looks like fixture, right?
When it's shining on your eye in any direction, it's not like.
Yeah, unpleasant. And, and it's also very bad for safety because you can't, your eyes can't adjust.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, so, yeah. Again, it wasn't, there, I don't mean to say that the HTRB thought they were aesthetically nice, but what they were moving towards was keeping that, which is, well, that's not aesthetically nice. Because of designing, engineering to light levels out in the lot where we don't really want to get into, but I think that, I think Alex has a plan for that, hopefully.
Yeah, and what I should have, I forgot to mention to them was, the reason we're not showing, because they kept saying, you're not showing light from the inside of the building that's throwing out, which we are, because we did a survey. They kept saying, we want to see the light from these signage lights. Well, the whole idea of this plan is if all these lights go out, Wells Fargo doesn't own the signage light. So if all the signage goes out or any of these lights go out, everything's going to be on Wells Fargo's circuit, so it doesn't matter. It's going to be passing because it's on Wells Fargo's electrical.
Yeah, you can only count the lights that you can control.
Right. And I probably, I didn't bring that up, but I probably should have at one point when they were talking about all these out of scope fixtures and because this signage light is not going to do anything for the photometrics. They, I think they just wanted to see it in the rendering. It's not going to do anything.
No, I can't imagine it does. First of all, it's very weak, fluorescent lighting.
So just because I don't live there, are these fluorescent lights shining down or are they shining at the sign?
I think they're angled, I think they're angled back towards.
They're at, yeah, right? Yeah.
Yeah. It's like, it's a, it's a gooseneck, you know, an angled gooseneck fluorescent tube as opposed to, they did the, they did the gooseneck, you know, shades over the Food Town sign. These were linear. You know, so it's a, a linear trough with a cutout in the back that, if I recall, that then angles it back towards the sign. It's not shining down.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, honestly, I don't really have much besides seeing, obviously addressing the board's comments about, one, getting with my legal team and making sure we're lighting for the correct standard. Two, trying to get a survey from the owner and then adding that owner block to the plans as well.
Yep.
And moving this pole to make sure and it's on the property, whether, I mean, we'll go ahead and preemptively move it, even if we don't get the survey, because we know that this is definitely in between. And then that's really, I guess, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's, I think that's, that's, you summarized.
And just on, and just on the pages where it's clear that, you know, either you're going to do a tearaway edge or whatever at the top to just, because see, you've also too, when you look at this, it looks like you're looking at land because you have zero here, right?
Yeah, that, that is misleading, so I'm sorry about that, that.
So just, if you could just make these pages just look like there's something there and it's not part of this, whether or not it's a tearaway or you white it out or.
Right, because basically what we're going to do is extend this building and you won't see any photometrics right here, pretty much.
Perfect. Yeah, yeah. I, I, again, we try to think of the next person that has to pull these plans and use them, you know? So it, it is confusing because you see, you, you assume there must be, there must be pavement there, right? Because you see light levels.
That, yeah, this is confusing. So I, I agree.
Okay. And however you want to represent, just that it's out of scope and there's more there and it's not being shown, whether it's a tearaway or.
The only thing I'm going to say is if we, I think underneath the canopy are happy with, but if we move these fixtures down, I'm not going to say it's a lot brighter, but this, you know, 6.9, 9.8, 10.3, 10, it may go up, you know, one to three foot candles, just depending on what we have to do. So I'm just.
And again, if you're, but obviously you're going to answer the first question, which is, are you designing to B or C? Because if your 60 foot radius is only one foot candle, you don't, you, you gotta, you have much less light to produce there.
Yeah, yeah. Agreed.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Anybody?
Because I feel like, I know that this is our fourth board meeting, and I'm not saying that, I think, I feel like every meeting that we've had has been productive and has gone towards a solution. But with the way Wells Fargo is trying to get everything done, they're looking at it like, oh my goodness, you've met four times, it's been two and a half months. Eventually, I think if we don't have a good solution, I think we'll have a good solution based off of our comments between the next two weeks for us. But if the HRB doesn't agree, I think the Wells Fargo team, like legal team is going to want to get involved. So I, I think we're fine because I think we're addressing stuff every board.
Let me, let me speak to the code enforcement officer. I, what I was a little troubled by last night was this comment that they're within their purview, which sounded like lighting plan, right? The arrangement of fixtures and the architectural characteristics of the feature fixtures, yes. If you look in chapter 64, light appears twice, and it's both, it's both on fixtures, not the lighting plan. And what I was trying to be very clear to them was that, and I think, I think they're clear. I think, I, I suspect you'll be, I, I, I don't, I hope you'll be fine next time when you go in. You know, just that it sounded like kind of they started, you know, kind of looking at everything and then finally went back to, well, could you just level out the, the, an arrangement of the fixtures is absolutely what the HTRB does. The, but what my point to them was, was that as you change the arrangement of the fixtures, you change the photometrics. Right? And the, the, the challenge there is that I'm willing to say, I don't, I don't, I don't ask the question that way because I'm not designing the lighting, nor do I want any part in, you know, wasting somebody's time and, you know, in screwing up a lighting plan, right? So, you know, I, what we've asked was, you know, could you address hotspots? Could you address, you know, could you address, you know, you know, throw and, you know, and, and light trespass? But I, it kind of seemed like near the end of it, they were just basically like, could you get them all in a straight line below the signage, right?
That's how I felt it ended.
Yeah, so I think, I, I, I hope you'll be fine. I will also, in, in parallel to that, I'll speak to the code enforcement officer to, so we're very clear on which board has authority here. Because, you know, like, what I would try to be clear to them is I said, listen, it's a state statute, this must go forward. Right? You know, the, it's the code enforcement, who I, you know, I invoked her name as well to say the code enforcement officer has said this, you know, this absolutely trumps our local code. You know, we have to figure, we have to, you know, support the application and, and move the, and move the project forward. So we'll all speak to her too about what her feelings are about, you know, how to, how to move this along as well.
Okay, yeah, that's perfect. I just, I didn't want to get into an area where, you know, we appease you and then it's perfect, but they still don't like it. And then at that point, it's really, what do we do? Like, we have to go.
And that, that was that point last night. I said, you're really, you're really going to bounce the applicant back and forth because as you move a fixture, you have changed the photometric. So now you're the designer, right? Or the lighting engineer. That's not how it's supposed to work. Right? That's not what our boards are supposed to be doing. We're, we have code that we work under, we're going to talk to, I'm going to talk to you, you know, the board's going to talk to you here about light trespass. We're going to talk about safety, and we're going to look at our comp plan, which says, keep it, you know, keep it dark, which is unusual, but that's, that's cold spring, which I personally like, doesn't matter, but that's what's in the code, right? So that's all we're supposed to do, right? We're not supposed to be saying, you know, move this over here and move this over here, unless it has to do with site, you know, with site plan safety, right? So I think I kind of got the sense, though, that after all that talk, and there was a lot of talk, that I think that you'll, that you'll, I think it sounded like that if you just kind of level them all out. I was a little concerned that it was like, well, there's millions of fixtures to try, you know, and I'm like, oh, good lord. You know?
Yeah.
If you move it down two feet and then switch to another fixture. So, you know, I mean, I, I did my best. I mean, you saw my, well, you didn't see my email where I said, you know, the fixtures are not architectural elements, they are not decorative objects. They are utilitarian fixtures that aren't really made to be looked at or even perceived as anything. Yeah, they're meant to fade away. So I said, you know, and these are code compliant to be tamper and, you know, and vandal resistant. You know, and they're.
Not a million.
Yeah, so.
This is, this is subject to a state, a state code, right? A state safety requirement?
Yeah.
So, um, I, i- is there not deference? Isn't there deference and to that?
There actually is. Without, without question, state code trumps, trumps local code. Right? You, you have to design to the more stringent, right?
Right. Yeah, yeah.
And this.
Okay.
That's why John, John, our lawyer, the, the village lawyer said that too.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. That's absolutely true. Yeah, there's no question. And so I'll talk to the, the code enforcement officers to the, kind of the purview issues here and moving it forward. If, if in the off chance, which I, I, I don't, I, I kind of got the sense, even though, like I said, there was a lot of talk for an hour before, I think that it kind of ended up with, you know, could you kind of level out the fixtures? But again, moving the fixtures down a few feet then creates, you know, it, it creates, you know, it changes the photometrics. It just does.
We'll definitely try it, but based off this conversation, I'm going to update everything to keep the planning board happy versus moving fixtures and having hotspots or items like that, and as well as getting with our legal team. and as well as getting with our legal team, moving the property line, extending the building, removing the striping, all that stuff.
Yeah, and I look, and I think if you, if you can meet their, I think that's a, it's a reasonable request, like, really not to screw the lighting plan for the. And this may all change, may even be a happy accident, if it turns out you don't even need the five foot radius, right? That you're really just looking at a thirty and a sixty at lower foot candles anyway, you could actually use, you know, a lower, you know, a lower lumen fixture, because I assume that fixture comes in many different lumens, right?
Yes, absolutely, and I'm not, I'm not sure which package we're using here for the specific ones, but yes, yep.
So hopefully that'll give you a little bit of leeway to kind of meet both, yeah, look, I I don't want to say that. I I think it is, you know, it's reasonable to, you know, to ask, but at some point, if it can't be met, then obviously, you know, and 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 we can talk about the tenancy issue, but I'm less concerned about that, I I just, I mean, I don't, I don't see anybody going up there and taking it off and wanting to patch all this stuff, and, you know, Wells Fargo probably isn't going anywhere, right? So I think that we'll just leave that alone. Because then, like I said, their comment were, well, they could stay forever, and I'm like, well, then it's required by code, so the light, the lighting would stay, I don't, you know? Yeah, so see what you can do, I think that, you know, when you figure out which, you know, what the correct statute is that you're, that you're designing to, then obviously things may become a little bit easier.
Yeah, I'll definitely ask our team tomorrow, and if they don't, I bet they'll provide an answer either tomorrow or early next week, and then we can go from there, I guess my, one of my other questions is, if we don't receive a survey from the owner before we have to submit our plans, can we go ahead and submit them, moving the property line to what we think we know, which is the building?
I think, I think that's, I think that's fine to move things along, I'll, I'm happy to apply pressure to Alex as well.
Okay.
And also.
We'll reach out to that email and ask for a full survey.
Yeah, and that we, and and again, it doesn't, you don't have to incorporate it into the drawings, other than drawing the line where it looks like it needs to be. I suspect that were there an issue, the the parking spaces themselves would have been called out a long time ago, right? And as Antolara's point, the parking spaces align with the northern edge of the building, that's likely the lot line, right? Or or just inside the lot line, so if you stay inside the parking striping and put it at the, like, where you're showing there, you know, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be fine. And then we'll have the stamp on the drawing, which is really kind of belts and suspenders to say, well, you know, the landlord is attesting that this is true and accurate, right? And the landlord approves the work, which means, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep saying landlord, I should be saying owner, and the property owner, who is also the landlord, but just that, there, it's their skin in the game, really, right? You know, that's what, that's what the planning board would like to understand, because obviously they own the property and any, any risks or violations against the property go to the property, right, not the tenant.
Yep.
Right, so we need to make sure that he's clear there, and and he's, and he's, and he's great to deal with and very responsive. I'm sure he probably just forgot, because he responds so quickly, I suspect he's at the rest or whatever, and he, you know, and he's marking up a drawing and replying immediately and then forgetting, you know, the next morning, that he, you know, he, that he said he would send a survey, so.
He's been very responsive ever since we've gone into the.
Very, it's very, yeah, it's very nice guy, and yeah, and so I'm sure, I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll get it. I looked online to see if one was filed with the county, sometimes they get filed, sometimes they don't. We don't have one in the file, there's not one on micro fee, so I tried to help it along myself, just to, just so we could, so we could know. I I mean, I think it's pretty darn clear when you look at the adjacent site, that the, that the, I think we all know where the property line is, I think it's right where where and where Alex drew it.
Yeah.
Which, which was right through the fixture, so obviously you're gonna move your post.
Yep.
You know, into the space. It's ironic that he drew right through it, I'm like, exactly my point.
You just put a box, just, you know, down and over it.
Yeah, exactly, he didn't, he didn't go just under it, he went right through the middle of it. All right, good, I think we're in good shape, and then again, and I I I do think that, you know, when you go back to the, I hope, I should say, that when you go back to the H R B, you'll just kind of show them that you, you know, that you you gave them a straight line and you're not, you know, you're not competing with the linear lighting on the signage.
Yeah, and I think if moving it down doesn't actually, let's say we have to light for the whole thing, we talked to our legal team, whatever, I think moving it down is not gonna be a significant light increase if it still meets compliance. It's gonna be one of, this, it'll be like, this will move down two feet, this one isn't underneath any signage, but we're gonna want it to move it to match, so this would move down like five feet maybe, so this one may be brighter right here, but.
Right, but it's already, but, but it's already half, it's already half with, you know, what the, what the one down here is. You know, so I mean, if if it gets brighter, if anything, it'll kind of even it out, you know, I I.
Right, because the whole light is not gonna be.
Right.
Okay, I'm, I appreciate all the comments and all that makes sense to me, so we'll get something back to you. When do we need to have everything ready to be on the next meeting?
We'll, we'll put you on the next meeting, just try to get it to us at least a couple of days in advance, but the earlier the better. I'll shoot, I'll shoot Alex a reminder tomorrow to just, you know, say, send that survey over, and I'll be a little firm, just kind of say you're holding, you know? Are you on those emails?
I am, because I was, I saw the one where he drew it, and so I should be, if that's the email chain that you're talking about.
I think I'll just do, well, no, I'll, I'll leave it that way, I was gonna say, I'll just do one to him and just say, you know, you're kind of holding up your tenant. Oh, I'll, I will say just though that we're, you know, that we're, we're at a standstill until we have a survey.
Okay.
So he's clear that he needs to provide it, because I'm sure it's, I'm, I'm certain it's something that he has.
Then the only answer is our legal team, if we really need to be lighting towards what we say we're lighting or the statutes that you're saying that we need to do, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, my read of the statute, obviously I'm not a lawyer, but I don't really see a whole lot, and I don't see anything else in there. Right, it basically says, if it is an interior lobby, it's one way, if it's mounted on the face of the building, it's another way. But they may be aware of some interpretation that isn't really in the, because look, code is not just what's written, it's also the interpretation and the, and the past practice and precedent of it, right? So it could be something that's not clearly written in the code, we have parking waivers that are not clear, that they're not for use for residential expansion, right? But, you know, that is our interpretation, and that's all the supporting document, you wouldn't read it that way in the code. So it may be that there was some sort of court interpretation or whatever, that if it's, like you said, it has something to do with the, with the lobby and the, and maybe interior, like you said, is actually in the, you know, in a building and not just in a vestibule that's twenty four hours, who knows, you'll, I'm sure you'll find out.
We'll all find out.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, once you find out, we'll know. All right, very good. Thanks so much, guys. Yep, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Public comment, I think we have no public, so there can't be any comments, do we have any board business? So we'll all speak to Charlotte, I'm a little, you know, I I tried to kind of advocate for the applicant last night, it didn't go great. Where it's just kind of saying that, you know, it, it is clear in their code that the, what is in there for lighting is the arrangement of fixtures, right? Which is really a little vague to me, much like natural resources, you know, so it's just, it, you know, it could just kind of.
Leaves things open to interpretation.
Well, that's just it, is that, you know, what I really, really, what I was interested in in doing this work was really getting to a point, and I think we've done a very good job, and you guys have all been very helpful in that, and people used to just get mired down in the planning board forever. There were applications that would be in the planning board for over a year, just for, you know, opening a shop, you know, and it's, and that's nuts, it's just nuts. People have, you know, not to say that that commercial applications are more important, but often the dollars are different than, you know, I'm renting a space and I can't get into it versus I can't start my kitchen renovation, right? That it's a different, it's a, it's a different world, right? And so, you know, we try to get them through as quickly as possible and try to get to a point where there's a predictable outcome, right? But, you know, when you have things like the arrangement of fixtures, and I get it, look, I mean, and and look, let's be honest, we don't, we wouldn't support this plan were it not mandated by a state statute, right? We wouldn't say, oh, wait, you're gonna unevenly light that, you know, look, if Sarukas came back to us and said, I want to do a third of my site, right? We'd be like, no, 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 go light the whole thing, right? You know, we're not doing this, right? But it, it, it makes sense because it's, you know, we don't want the whole thing lit, right? And it's part of a state statute, so, but then, like I said, it was, and and Alex obviously, you know, was, was very clear, because he's living through it, is that to say move the fixtures, but then moving the fixtures changes the photometrics, and then he doesn't meet the requirement, it's, you know, and then he's creating hotspots where we said, remove the hotspots, right? You know, because obviously you bring the fixture down, you create a hotspot, so he's, he's listening, right? He's like, oh, wait, I was just with the planning board, and they said, but look, you mean, so those hotspots, thirty foot candles, that's a lot of light. You know, so now he's got that resolved, and then they're saying, bring a fixture down six feet towards that hot, where that hotspot was. Well, there's a new hotspot, right? So, but, you know, hopefully, it may be a happy accident that maybe they're designing to the wrong statute, right? Because I don't, I don't, you know, unless they've got something that's not in the code, that was a later interpretation, it looks pretty clear to me that you're, it's really just two foot candles at thirty feet and one foot candle at sixty feet, and that's a much lower light level, which would be better for just everything, the contrast between the two ends wouldn't be so severe. And then they could use a lower package on the fixture and and drop it down and still meet, like, the H R B's comments are reasonable. I mean, from an aesthetic perspective, you got kind of the lights on the facade kind of jumping up and down. And then possibly, and I hadn't considered that, it was a good call, on their part, really, they would be competing, you know, could be competing with the signage light. So that's, so we'll see where that goes, it's just, I just don't, I'll speak to Charlotte just to kind of say, well, who who has authority here to kind of move this along? Because we can't kind of have, i- in the event that happens, and I'm, I'm hopeful it's not gonna happen, that they'll go to the H R B in a couple of weeks and they'll, you know, and they'll, they'll accept that he.
Are we resolved? I mean, we're resolved, but for the survey, right?
And the, 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 what Matt was just talking about.
Yeah, the whole, all the photometric, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, could, because it could change everything, right?
Yeah.
Which, which statute he's designing.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, I see, so there's a depend, the, based on the dependency, the the H R B dependency, right?
Well, the first, yeah, the first thing is the statute, right? So, yeah, interior, it looks, as far as I can read on the code, an interior lobby vestibule only has two requirements, right? A thirty foot, two feet, two feet radius at thirty feet, at two, two foot candles at thirty feet, and one foot candle at sixty. The, the one, because I think what that means then is they want, I, my understanding of the code is they want the ATM itself brightly lit, right? So that's what the five feet about, is about, the ATM is affixed to the face of the building, and then there's a five foot radius that is very brightly lit, that's already happening inside the vestibule, right? The bright lighting of the, of the person standing at the machine is already happening in the vestibule. So that's why I think there is no requirement that high when you step out of the lobby, right? You're then at the, you're then on the exterior, right, outside the vestibule, and then it's just two foot candles and then one foot candle, which is not bad at all. Right, I think he might even be able to even to tweak down the light post. Right, because it, that's not a whole lot of light, you know? I mean, it's a lot more than, well, it's not a lot more in there, I think the other end has like a half a foot candle or whatever, so then we're not have, you know, when we first started this thing, you know, not to be hyperbolic, but I mean, it's just, I was just concerned about this, you know, looking like, you know, Close Encounters of the Third Kind, it's just like white column, you know, on this quarter of the building, and I'm like, oh, Christ. You know, but look, again, we don't have to love it if it's state statute, right? We just need to explain it, right, and to make sure that it's code compliant, so I think we should be, I think we should be okay. I I'm hoping that he comes back and says, you know, whoopsie, it's, it is supposed to be the other one.
And I'm really curious about that, that's a really good find.
Yeah, because I was looking at it, and I had, you know, as you saw, I kind of marked up the whole plan, basically crossing out the five foot and crossing out the, you know, the ten foot, because it seems, like I said, what the code is doing is you need a super well lit ATM itself, right? So when you're standing there, people can see somebody attacking you or whatever bad things happen in ATMs, right? You know, so, but that's already lit in the lobby, that's already has those foot candles, right? You know, so it's lesser as you step away from it, just so, you know, so it's unobstructed and it's lit, but not as highly lit as when you're standing at the machine, right? So I think that, I'm hopeful that he comes back and it's kind of this happy accident, and then, like I said, all the other stuff can be, can be reduced a bit, right? And then all the contrast between the south and the north end gets a little softer. So I think it's pretty decent, and I think that, you know, I like the idea of all the lights being on their circuiting and being on dusk to dawn, you know? Look, it's, it's not the most beautiful thing, but i- if you have an ATM and safety is of a concern, that, you know, that dark alleyway is not great, you know? All right.
Agreed.
Anything else? Okay, great.
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Lara. All in favor?
Did we?
What?
Oh, did we lose, we lose, we lost too?
I sue, yeah, she dropped off a little bit.
Okay, all right.
All right, technical difficulties, maybe, all right, all right, everybody, be well.
See you guys.